We're going to forego the pledge tonight. We got it over here, but Sarah. Um, and I'm assuming there's no more changes to the agenda at this point. All right, so I'm going to look for somebody to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, let me make some motion just as a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 She carries, Brent, you got the next one.
Okay, this item is regards to special event permit they received for baked herbs that are going to be catering for our wedding on August, I believe it's next weekend. I'll point it up here. On October thirteenth, from five p.m. until midnight, like it says, for our wedding, the years is going to be catering for a special event alcohol permit. They have to have this permit in order to be able to serve at the senior center. So, um, the next item related to that would be, we have on here, just talking special permits in general of in the future when we did these. But the council, if we're able to have these approved at staff level, would you like to approve the staff or do you want us to branch to the council every single time we get them? So those are my two questions. One is the request of consideration for that special event permit. The other one is, would you like these to be brought to council every single time? Or if we do have one that, you know, say staff approves it, or like I did approve it, and then we put on consent later date, so you know that this event permit happened. Just a couple considerations for you. Because we do seem to get these. Sometimes they're last minute.
It has to stay with them.
It does have to stay with them.
Century Code says it has to be a governing body.
Right, so one of the things Brent was going to ask, so we had a meeting last night. So why was that not on it for last night?
This one, the staff, staff that had it, on hand, they didn't realize it was there until this morning. And so that's why we got for tonight, going, well, we had a special meeting. So we have to hit the agenda, so any days consider it, so. What should we have had last night? Yeah, I have it.
Yeah, because I'd like to see, I want to see this stuff in a little earlier because it's not last minute. I do not want to have special meetings just because of these permits.
Yep.
So I don't want to do that anymore. Um, as far as, yeah, process, it's on us to make those decisions. But I do want them to be a little bit more timely because one of these times we're going to deny it. If they're late, so I'd rather not do that, but.
And right now, we require them to be out to us seven days in advance. We're going to have to bump that timeline up to probably more like twenty-one days in advance. Because there's going to be some circumstances where, you know, we're in need of about a month ahead of time.
Yep, I don't, just like I'm saying, I want to make sure that we give the council enough time. And I think on their end, they have notice of these weddings usually made advance. They can be a little bit more diligent in getting that plus, I don't think we need to have any special meetings for it. Not to, I mean, we can include it tonight, I mean, but going forward, I do not want to get called for a special meeting to have anything to do with the special event permits.
Yep.
What you guys think about that, but that's my, my take.
I just want to make sure that they've, I have security for it. I'm not, I'm not worried about the bigger, because I know that I already know security, stuff like that. It's more of the, what we approved last meeting. Um, I don't mean yesterday, just I guess before that, when we had the special session just to approve something for the hot boosters, whatever it was. And we couldn't even verify that security hired yet. Um, that's, that's my biggest take.
Well, we add that onto the application form as well, saying who will provide security.
And it has to be answered before I approve it.
Yep, so it just need on the application form, so you have to answer it.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
So we want to make a motion to approve it.
Let me make that motion.
I'll second.
Japanese motions, Stephanie is a second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, everybody, motion carries. All right, Jim, we start on five, we'll start with a.
All right, water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty-two-one dash one was construction of Southdale Farms third edition. Southdale Farms third edition is the yellow area shown on the map on the screen. This is Christensen Boulevard along here. On the left, we have Conner Road seventeen. It does take over two pages of paper, so. Uh, this is Christensen Boulevard, Conner Road seventeen, seventy-six avenue, down here further. So this is the local and regional improvements for the construction of this addition. The local improvements are water sewer, storm sewer, streets. Regional improvement consisted of upsizing Christensen Boulevard to be a regional street with concrete surfacing and additional area as far as a street width. The assessments were done based upon, originally done based upon the city of boards, it's special assessment policy dated six-six twenty-twenty-two. So you will notice that this project is a twenty-one project, so it was in the queue prior to this policy being adopted. But we did use the load factoring as identified in the policy on the regional component, which would be a portion of Christensen Boulevard. So the regional component was used on, there's parkland. This is school land here that I'm circling. This is parkland here. The rest of this is just commercial on the outside. So, uh, use factors were used on both the park, the school, and these. And the use factoring for the regional was done on the fourth edition of Southdale Farms. And the first edition of Southdale Farms, the sixth edition, fifth edition, sixth edition as well. So you'll see that the, there's a proposal of a sixteen hundred dollars roughly assessment for regional storm sewer for the stormwater pond. For the urban on Southdale Farms first, sixteen hundred fourteen dollars on the fifth. Fifteen hundred dollars on the fourth edition. And then there is, um, the remainder on the large lot commercial wrapping, wrapping around, so. Zooming in on here, one hundred seventy-five thousand four sixty-one for the park district and for the school district. That's based on the load factors identified in the policy of forty-five units per acre. I better double check that. Yep, forty-five units per, forty-five per acre for street use factor. And then a park having a street use factor of five per acre, so there's a discrepancy there. That's why the two similar sized lots have such a significance in there, it has to do with the use factor, so. All the local assessments were done in the typical form, front footage for sewer, front footage. There is no water in this, this is a casual project, there's stuff there, they special assess those on their own. So there is, um, uh, front footage for water, front footage for sewer, each for connections, and then area for storm sewer. And then street is front foot with a regional street component being, being, um, use factor, so.
Okay, anything else, Jim?
No, not unless you have any questions on the project itself or the method that was used to get to the numbers that were proposed. Uh, this did go through the special assessment commission. The special assessment commission did, um, take the desires of, of the developer. I shouldn't say desires, but the comments of the developer. And typically, the lots, the blocks are all added up and then divided equally amongst the lots. It's just their way of equalizing the lots. Um, there was discussion had about these residential lots being significantly less than the first edition. It's about twenty-seven, twenty-seven-two for, for, um, a total assessment, whereas the first phase was around twenty-three-five-ish, Chris, if that sounds right.
You've got it on you.
Yeah, I handed it out here.
Yeah, so this is the first, the first phase. So, um, the special assessment commission did take that into account, the first part of it. And they directed us through a motion to cut the load factoring of the commercial lots in half. That did not yield the results because the load factoring is only a portion of the regional cost and the regional is two million of the six million, four million is the local. So the adjustments have to be made in the local, in the local share. So that was discussed by the special assessment commission. Uh, we did do their wishes, that's what we came with as far as you see in front of you. Now, the developer has provided an objection to that. So, um, if you have any questions prior to his objection, let's get those out here. Anybody have any questions on the project or how we came to be or where we're at?
Mr. Merrick, can I just provide some procedural history and then some guidance on what we're doing tonight for this meeting? So first of all, councilman and everyone here, the purpose of tonight's meeting, as Jim explained, the special assessment commission has met several times on the list that are being presented to you today to come up with the assessment list as you see them. Uh, the goal of today's meeting, if we need to table this for another meeting, certainly can, but the goal is for the council to confirm the assessment list for these four districts tonight, meaning to approve the final list that will then certify to the county, which those assessments will then be put on the tax rolls and levied for payment next year. So that's kind of, uh, you know, overall what we're doing. Letters have been sent to, to property owners, uh, in the past informing them of their opportunity to appeal the decision of the special assessment commission to you tonight in the form of an objection. In order to make that appeal with you under century code, under the city's policy, on information that was posted on the city's website, they have to file a written objection or written appeal with the city auditor before tonight's meeting, explaining, uh, the reasons for their appeal. Um, it's my understanding that Brent received, uh, two of those written objections, one of which is Chris Mack. Uh, the other one is Joel Honeyman. So those are the only two that we received for all of the districts that we'll be discussing tonight. Now, from a procedural standpoint as to what has happened so far to get to where we are today with an actual timeline. The, uh, special assessment commission first met, uh, I think in June or July to discuss the preliminary lists. They then, uh, have their hearing, their objection hearing, uh, on those preliminary lists. So letters for those, uh, for the preliminary list was mailed July thirty-first, and it was published in the forum on July twenty-sixth and August second. Uh, it was posted on the city's website. And, um, the, the notice said that the, uh, special assessment commission would meet on August fourteenth, uh, which they did. So all the objection hearings, uh, before the special assessment commission were done on August fourteenth. And two of those districts, um, the special assessment commission had an additional meeting on August twenty-second for further input. So what, what Jim is discussing, uh, there are comments from developers that were received that special assessment commission wanted another meeting to go over the numbers and verify, uh, that the numbers were what they wanted. So Lakeview and Southdale Farms third were the two districts that had the additional meeting, uh, on August twenty-second. And then, um, notice was published for this meeting on August thirtieth. And there's only one notice that's required to be, uh, published in the newspaper, so that was on August thirtieth for an October third, uh, objection ring for the city council. And that notice was also posted on the city's website, so people can just go on the, the city's special assessment link and then view, uh, the assessments that are proposed. So that's kind of where we are today. Um, I don't think I need to get into that for every district. Um, but you just know that those are the different notices that were sent out, a letter was sent out, posted on the city's website, published in the paper. Uh, and that's all with information that's contained in the city's special assessment policy and the process, that's all under the century code. So if you have any questions on, on, you know, why we're here today, uh, feel free to ask and then Jim can answer any project or assessment type questions.
So the two written's that we have tonight, one is from Chris Mack and the other one is from Joel Honeyman. That's what I have in front of me.
So the written objection for this one is up on the screen right now.
Yep. Question?
But that's not for this?
Yes, it is.
Oh, this one, oh, I'm sorry, yep.
With what we were talking about last night, uh, in regards to, uh, postal service and residents getting their mail, we verified that they did get these letters, is that right?
So these, these letters, uh, the letter that I'm referring to was mailed July thirty-first. And we know that they got that letter because there were several people at the special assessment commission meeting. And at that meeting, we also informed them that if they desire, they can object, uh, to the city council and made sure that they knew that the, uh, they would have to file that written appeal with the city auditor before they had an opportunity to present their objection to you tonight. So that was said time and time again at that meeting, so I wanted to make sure that people knew that they had to file that before. We also told them at that meeting, do not expect another letter from the city because it's not coming. There's only that letter that gets sent on July thirty-first. That letter said on there that the, the city council objection hearing will be coming later on. And then we informed them at the meeting to check the city's website, uh, because the, this meeting would be on the city's website.
Okay, so my follow-up question to that would be, um, the information that was sent out in that letter to them, that was what we are currently seeing right now as far as the dollar amount? Or what dollar amount was that? Or was there any dollar amount?
So I think it depends on the district, I think two of them.
The dollar amount that was provided within the letter is the initial starting point of where the, or actually, it's not, it's where the special assessing commission.
Which would be this one, right?
Was, uh,
After their first meeting.
After their first meeting, so they did preliminary review and letters go out and they have their objection hearing. The letters are definitely when the objection hearing is for a special assessing commission. So it was after the preliminary review from the special assessing commission. Now, the dollar, the ounce that you see on your strategy sheets or on the information you have tonight may be similar, maybe the same, or adjusted based on what they recommend. The special assessing commission recommends. So what you're seeing in front of you from staff or from Jim here would be the special assessing commission recommendations.
So for Southdale, it's after, the Southdale Farm ones that you see, so we'll take these one at a time. Is after the protest hearing with the special assessment commission. So they received the letter prior to the protest. They were able to come in to protest, but you see with Southdale is after that one.
And so the preliminary was one documented, and we have special assessment north portion, south portion, is that what you mean? This is, this was what, was, this was what came out of the commission hearing?
Yep.
This did.
That's what I want to make sure of.
So residents are, those that, interested parties were at that meeting, so they knew what the changes were potentially going to be. Two of the districts were approved that night. And then two were approved on August twenty-second. And interested parties were at both meetings.
Stick with, uh, Southdale for right now. Um, after that meeting, at that point, was there any objection from, uh, the private Chris Mack is representing at that night, proposed changes?
Yep.
Okay.
So at that meeting, we were directed to half the commercial land use factor or use factor to try to yield the results that were discussed at that meeting. And that action was done, which is what you see in front of you right now. It didn't get the results that were thought at that time.
It just got to the twenty-seven.
It got to that.
And so I, I apologize if this is an uninformed question and maybe I'm not, maybe I'm understanding differing information, but the preliminary special assessment map showed, showed Southdale third at like eleven-oh-three. Right? And then it jumped to potentially twenty-seven.
No, no, it wouldn't have gone that.
That's what I mean, what's this eleven, what is this eleven-oh-three assessment on?
That's for Southdale Farms first edition. That's for twenty-twenty-dash-one, right? That's what Chris just gave you, right?
Yeah. No, this one, I was looking at the one that says preliminary special assessment map.
But what district is it?
It doesn't say on the preliminary special assessment.
It says nineteen.
That's why I was confused.
I think that's what Chris Mack wants.
Yeah, that's the.
That's what he's asking.
You wrote eleven-oh-three on the residential lots?
No, no, no.
No.
Um, so what that is, that's from what was approved on, that's essentially what was approved when the, um, Southdale first was certified. So is that eleven-oh-three added to this number already or how?
No, this is strictly for third edition.
It would be the twenty, twenty-seven plus eleven-oh-three, correct?
That's where I was getting confused.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
But the reason I handed that out was to show.
Sit on the one in your right hand. Just sit on that one. Don't throw it away, it'll come up in his objection.
I don't need to, okay.
But don't focus on it right now.
Okay, thank you, it was confusing. Okay.
Yep.
On the screen is a recommendation from the special assessing commission based on what Jim was describing.
Yes.
Okay.
So let's just look at that one for right now.
Okay.
And I think let's get all your questions from the procedural standpoint out of the way.
Yes.
And let's get into the objection. So, yes, Councilor Truro, did I answer all your questions as far as the, the notices that were sent out, the information that was presented to property owners, I mean?
Correct, that is what I was getting at, I wanted to make sure that the property owners got what came out of that, that most recent commission meeting, uh, as far as the number.
And we stressed to them.
And we did not get a bunch of kickback.
Okay, and that, that is what I want to make sure of, that by far is what I want to make sure of, that they got that number.
And a lot, I would say a lot of the questions or concerns that we noticed at the special assessment commission hearing were related to project details, project components. Um, and so we, I mean, answered the questions as they were presented, and I think that alleviated, um, a lot of concerns that night. So they weren't even tied necessarily to the, to the assessments. The question was regional, local type issue because, because residents and existing developments were concerned that they were paying for a new development, but then I was explaining to them, well, you're actually just paying for a regional component, and then they understood and appreciated the feedback, I think that they got that night.
Okay.
Okay, so is there any other procedural questions or concerns here? Okay, so then, do we want to start with the first one? Jim, can we walk our way through these? How would you like to?
As far as?
Just with the objection hearing and stuff like that one.
Yeah.
Take these one at a time, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. We'll start with that first one, uh, the Southdale Farms third edition, and then kind of, just out there. So they, we have, now Chris, maybe you just want to start?
You could open the objection.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, we'll just open the objection hearing for that one. Chris, you go ahead.
Yeah, I can explain, so what I handed to you was, uh, basically what Jim has. Um, and that is to kind of differ them, um, it has the, the white boxes with the black lettering. And then I handed another one to you, um, with the red lettering. And then the other one is, um, Southdale Farms first edition. So, uh, I was out of town when the original, uh, meeting was held on the fifteenth, I believe, or last of August.
Fourteenth.
Um, and I had, uh, another colleague, um, Tony, uh, in our office. She came to the meeting, um, it was tabled by the special assessment commission. Um, it was rescheduled for the, uh, morning of the twenty-second and met with the special assessment commission. And what was discussed was, um, lowering the load factoring by half on the, um, commercial lots, like what Jim said. Um, and it didn't quite get the desired, um, numbers that we wanted. So one thing I brought up to them was showing them, um, Southdale Farm first. So all of the lots that were part of the local assessments, and I don't know what the, I think basically it was the same, same thing, correct, Jim? It was the square footage, each and, uh, the front footage. Um, and you can see on the Southdale first, the, the least amount of assessments on first is three-thousand. Um, and the average is around thirty-seven thousand. Um, and then the larger lots on the east side of the, uh, subdivision, um, they're at forty-two thousand. Um, with the discussion with the special assessment commission, they said the thirty-seven to thirty-five thousand sounds about right, but when we did the, the load factor adjustment, it still rendered the, the main commercial or the, the, um, the residential lots in Southdale first around that twenty-seven, so we have a big difference in assessments. And what we're trying to do is keep it consistent. So I've seen some very preliminary, um, numbers on Southdale fourth as well, and that was part of the region. We worked with the city and we worked with the, uh, with Dakota to try and help save some costs on the entire, or on the overall project on fourth because the preliminary assessments were very high. I don't know what the difference, why they were so high, but they were higher than, um, these forty-twos. So what we don't want is have these really low and then have the next subdivision high. We want to keep the consistency throughout all of the lots that we're selling. One thing, another thing I did send, um, it was, so as we get these lots optioned, we work with, uh, the builders or the, the real estate agents, and then Tom Deacon, he's our residential land sales gentleman. I highlighted it in yellow. So right there, they were at, they asked, they were asking an estimate, and this was from, uh, the end of June of this year. And this is kind of what we give them, a ballpark of what to expect on assessment. That was prior to seeing the, um, seeing the preliminary one that, uh, Jim sent. I think it was the end of, or middle of July. So what we're asking, um, so the one with the red is, met with Jim yesterday. Um, what we're asking to do is set all of the residential lots at thirty-five thousand. Um, and then using the, um, the load factor formula, is it divided by, or by fifty percent, correct?
Fifty percent reduction of the regional component to everything minus Southdale Farms third. So the first edition would be a reduction of fifty percent, fourth edition, fifth edition, and sixth edition.
Yep, so you, you can see that, uh, those fifteen hundred dollar numbers on first edition are now at, uh, seven-sixty-eight. Been cut in half. And another thing to point out, um, so we're already sitting on Southdale first. A lot of those, we don't own any lots, but those residents have thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand dollars in specials. And then you're adding another fifteen hundred dollars of specials to those. Um, and then these ones are at twenty-seven, so there's no consistency in it. And that's, um, the, the one with red is the one that, uh, we worked with, uh, Jim and Nick. I worked with Jim and Nick yesterday to provide, um, for today's meeting, so.
So that we might ask where the fifty percent reduction goes. Fifty percent reduction went on these two lots.
Which two?
These two lots right here on the far west side.
And what are they again?
What are they?
What are, are they commercial, the school parks?
Commercial. Yep, and I think that the justification from, from the developer's standpoint was that these are on Conner seventeen, on Christensen Boulevard, they're kind of desirable, desirable lots.
Are they sold?
No, not at this time. And, and that's another thing to point out with, with load factoring being so high on commercial. The assessments per square foot gets so high that when we go to sell them, or if we keep them and develop them ourselves, they just, there's, they get tough to move. So we like to stay around that two dollars, um, give or take per square foot. That's why I have the square footages on the, uh, on the map they gave you as well. Price per square foot, I guess.
So Chris, on that, uh, Southdale one again, we added that seven, seven-sixty-eight. That because there are specials up to a total of close to thirty-five, is that?
Um, well, if you look, most of the lots, um, are around, uh, thirty-seven, one-thirty, that's between, uh, seventy-second and seventy-first. Um, and then the, the next block, they're all the same, uh, thirty-seven, sixty-seven. So it actually, it would add another eight hundred dollars or so.
Okay.
Um, where with the, with, using the formula, uh, the, the, that Jim first presented, it'd be an additional fifteen hundred, so I mean, we would push in close to thirty-nine.
Yeah, that's, I'm just trying to, it's the consistency thing, I don't have a problem with like, with what you're trying, what you're trying to do there. Just like I said, if you're wanting to do thirty-five for the newer stuff, I'm just most curious what the total would be.
And if you look at that, that from first edition, so there's eleven-eighty on all of, uh, third edition. So it'd be eleven-eighty on top of the thirty-five.
Right.
So it'd still be less than what first was, but it would be more consistent, I guess.
When was first actually platted and?
It was platted in twenty-nineteen, I think it was finally approved in, um, spring of twenty-twenty. And then the construction was, uh, summer of twenty-twenty-two and, um, the builders did construction in twenty-twenty-one.
And I see, I see what you're trying to do here, but I- And I see, I see what you're trying to do here, but I guess just an observation is also, there's a lot of different economic times between different editions of Southdale. Do you know what I'm saying?
Understand.
I mean, I, I get the point of wanting to keep them more similar and wondering what different cost for different times, but they're all, they were all different times. I mean, way different economic times.
Yep, and fourth is going to be way different than?
And maybe higher than thirty-five then.
Well, it's going to be, yeah.
So.
Well, it's going to be higher than the price than first, so that's why we want to be consistent. So when neighbors are talking and they're talking about their assessments, they'll be like, oh, well, how come yours is at this level? And I mean, when you're talking ten to fourteen thousand dollars, that's a huge gap.
Yeah, I mean, I...
No, I get what you're...
And that's what it, in, that's what it will be realistically.
Do you have any questions on this?
I do. It's more of a comment. This is not intended to... All right?
Yep.
You and I sat in a meeting just part of July, where the comment came across from the organization that cities should be doing everything possible to help people be able to afford homes.
Yep.
What you're doing up here is shifting, we use that word, cost to residential and taking away from commercial. Which is not making homes more affordable. Also stating that more homes gets you closer to the commercial businesses that you want here in town.
Yep.
So I'm trying to understand the messages you guys are trying to convey with this. And like I said, this, this isn't an attack on you, all right? I want to know that.
There, there's a balance.
Okay. And I, I fully am aware, I even asked Jim, when did the policy come out? I just want to make sure that the policy was not placed when this was agreed upon.
Yep.
As far as the district. And the policy came out afterwards, so that, that at least I can understand. The policy was new, it has not been perfected yet. I fully agree that there needs to be some tweaks and changes to that policy to help not prevent one type of zoning versus the other, because right now, I will admit, there's pressure being put on commercial. I, I'm also trying to figure out a happy medium between that. And I will ask you, I'm going to turn the question around, is this doing everything possible to help sell homes?
Well, I, like, like I told you at the, like showing that letter, so when, when these homeowners are looking to buy their homes, this is what they're expecting. This is what we tell them. We tell them this is, we go off of past assessments. And this is what they're expecting already, so they already have it in their budget that they planned on. Oh, this is what I need my loan for, this is what I'm be paying, and this is what I'm ballparking, that I already know this is what my assessment's going to be. That's why I show that letter, because this is what we tell everybody. And it, we're staying consistent with what was previously done, and actually, this is going to be lower by a few thousand dollars compared to first, and now fourth is going to be higher. So I'm just trying to stay consistent. We can still move numbers around. But I mean, I did another quick calculation where we could add a little bit more back to the commercial, but like I said, we, right now, the commercial per square foot on the one I handed out, it was, and that's what Jim sent me, and we did, and he sent it to me at the end of the day yesterday, so I haven't had a lot of time to get into it. But it's like a dollar forty-four for a commercial per square foot, the other one's like a dollar twelve. So we could even those out, put some of that back into some of the, into the residential, drop those down a little bit. Because like I said, we want to try and keep the commercial around two, two twenty-five or below.
I, I understand that comment. My comment, in return to that, will be, with this policy going forward, we tried to put a policy in place so that you guys could try to predict what things are going to be. Like I said, I realize it's not perfect, and that is where I'm trying to show some leniency here, or will be. Going forward, the message needs to be, okay, if there's something wrong with that policy, we need to get people in, not just the developers or the builders, but more parties, the park board, school district, whomever. Try to sit down and figure out, okay, where did we go wrong? Because at some point, we're going to have to stick to that policy.
Well, I thought we were supposed to have a meeting about that, and we never did.
We were going to have some discussion on this, but we wanted to make sure we're fair with the Special Assessing Commission to be able to have them get through their recommendation and then get through tonight's meeting, or this meeting, so we go through this, and then we're able to recap what the council's saying, okay, here's how this shook out. So then, we're able to relay, okay, adjustments were made here, 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 for each of the different districts, or this is what you guys did. And then we can start getting some of that feedback too. So we don't want to interfere with the special assessment policy trying to, in the process, while trying to make adjustments to the policy at the same time, because that would just add more confusion to it.
Yeah.
Understand.
A little bit back and revisit this.
Because obviously, we see value in the policy of acknowledging that commercial and parks and stuff need to have a greater load factoring of some nature. They, they use the services and the infrastructure more, correct? And that was the, was that the purpose of the policy? Okay.
Well, the purpose of the policy was to take all the pressure off of the actual Special Assessment Commission, that you have a very good idea of what your special assessments are going to be.
Yeah, they're not just pointing their finger and saying, oh, you get this, you get that.
Trying to massage numbers. It is, okay, this is what we came up with, and to Stephanie's point earlier, different year, different project. Cost may be more expensive this year, may be cheaper, which is actually what we're seeing here with, you know, Southdale first versus Southdale third, and the same thing you'll see probably with fourth. So I know you wanted to try to keep it around some certain number. That's, I, I understand your point, but the numbers are going to have to start speaking for themselves. You know, if a project comes in and it's what it was bid at, and we have to accept that bid, where you guys, as developers, can say you'll, will hold off at this time, then we go that route. But what I'm saying right now is that, yep, this project was started before that policy was handed out. I understand that going forward, that we're going to have to start sticking to a policy, but I also want us to get information from all the invested parties to figure out where we went wrong in this policy.
I think after this, I mean, we're more than willing to meet with you guys as, as well, but just by looking at it, you can see that there are some things wrong with it. And like I said, with what I handed earlier, we're setting the, the residential's at a certain number, but the rest is done per the, the, the policy, I guess. But I, I think there is a way to, for future, after this one gets approved, that we need to sit down and figure out what makes the most sense, because we're, we are having big changes. And this project, I think, with twenty twenty, and when this one was done, this was done the following year, there wasn't a big difference as far as, like, in fourth, you're going to see it, because that's when the pipe cost and everything jumped up, and I think the whole project was twelve percent. But this was right in line with what, what, let's say, first was. So that's what I'm, that's what my point is. There wasn't a big jump on this, on third compared to first, as far as cost. So it is, the, the way the policy did it in first is way different than, than this one. So that's what we're asking for, and we're more than willing to sit down and work with the city, work with Brenton, work with Jim, something that makes a little more sense and divides everything out equally. So, because like you said, the commercial does need the resident, residential, and it goes hand in hand. Like with this commercial, it might add a little bit additional traffic to the site, but the goal is, once commercial goes in, the residents that live there are going to be using whatever's in the commercial lots too. So they're already there, and they walk. Like, as we've been doing plots, we've been trying to do more pedestrian connectivity, so they can walk, they can ride bikes, stuff like that.
Right, and I think that's why we have to revisit the policy, so that we make sure that we don't price the commercial out of the marketplace either, like what you're talking about.
Yep.
Because there is to be a balance in there where...
It's a fine line.
Just like you guys want to move the lots, totally get that. At the same time, you want to make sure that your commercial isn't excessively high based upon our policy either. So I think, I know we're going to have to go back and revisit this.
Yeah, and what we're proposing, I don't think is out of line, based on other subdivisions on assessments. I don't know if it's, I guess I didn't stick around for the Lakeview one last month, but I don't know if that, if these are pretty close.
So this is Terror Gardens, their single-family residential's in that thirty-five, forty-seven, depending upon the front edges. This is lots for Lakeview, thirty-five, zero, two, zero. So that's kind of about the same size lots as to what they're requesting.
Yeah. Are we sure if we were to approve their version, that the numbers match, they all equal what we need? Because I don't want to have another issue that we had in the past with over in Terror Gardens where we had that. I don't know if it was the same.
That was a different situation. So that was a big lot, that was a large lot that got subdivided, and then when the specials got reallocated to it, they were reallocated just on a, it was, it was kind of a different circumstance.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not missing any numbers, and there's not going to be a big headache later down the road.
How can we miss any numbers?
I'm just saying. I don't want it to be a big mess.
One last question here. Um, are those the only commercial lots that are getting a discount, or is there any commercial lots that are not getting a discount?
Um, I think the other ones are they?
The commercial lots didn't get a discount.
I should say, get reduction versus?
No, they didn't get reduced. The whole thing was to bring the commercial up to be more palatable.
No.
Commercial came up too.
Okay.
These commercial lots came up, right, Chris?
No.
No, no, so when we, when we did the original, we, we lowered every, even on the unplanted lots too. So we lowered it on the unplanted lots as well. So what we don't want to do is on the unplanted lots, like the ones in the white on the north, and the residential stuff that's going to go on the east, those were up higher too. So it got reduced kind of everywhere, I think.
And where was the school and the park lots again? What happened to them?
Right here.
They're purple. Okay, what happened? There's no change to them?
No change, they're, they're for policy.
Okay.
Hall or Martin, did you guys have a chance to redo this at all? Have any comments? Either one, if you want to make a comment, I appreciate it.
Sure.
I guess, I, I'll, I'll talk about what we went through, not necessarily verbatim, but as Chris Mack said about the commercial lots, that was one of the big concerns that he had was bringing down, or bringing that special assessment down to a marketable value around two dollars, right? If I recall, the initial were like, one was forty-four cents, one was like three sixty, like they were kind of all over. And I guess I'll preface this by saying, we had looked at load factoring as a concern. We had the concern as a special assessment. I mean, when we talk about consistency, first off, why did we pass this policy? And as to be consistent in how we apply special assessment. This city council voted to get a consultant in to set a policy and, and abide by that policy, relatively speaking. But the thing I appreciate about the policy was it gave us some latitude. As unique situations arise, we could adjust, and, and we have. You know, one of the things was, you know, we had the West Fargo School in here saying seventy load factor was too high. If you recall that conversation, that was brought down, right, in line to, I think, like forty-five, right? So I would say in all the districts that we saw this year, there was a fair amount of compromise given as far as load factoring, considering future use, land use, and those types of things. We want to stay tied to policy, but we also took some, took some lean, you know, some freedoms, you know, to kind of operate within the policy, but, you know, try to fix things, you know, if that makes sense.
So let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
The school right now up in, in my graph, if you go back up to it, is that at that seventy percent load factor, or is that up at forty-five?
Forty-five. It's a forty-five, yes, yep.
And something also is discussed a lot with the Special Assessment Commission, and the reason for the, the changes and the, going away a little bit from the policy is that these requests are from the developer, and they're affecting the same property, or they, they own the property. All of it. It's not having an effect on, on the other lots with what's being discussed tonight. So that was something that was discussed quite a bit that night, was same property owner.
And what, and I guess while marketability on these, I mean, that's a good call out too, I appreciate you bringing that up. I mean, I guess while marketability is a concern too, I mean, that's not really how we should determine specials, right? I mean, we, we have a very methodical, we have, we have a method, we have a, have a policy in place to do this. The Special Assessment Committee took all these complaints or comments into consideration in all of these. We spent a lot of time on it. I'm proud of the work we did and the group did. I don't know if I have anything else to add. I mean, I would just recommend to stay with what the Special Assessment Committee has proposed, just from the fact that we did the work, and we considered all these requests, including dropping the load factor on these commercial lots.
So this is what, what Chris has made reference to is what you guys have proposed as well, is that what you're saying?
Chris, Chris's proposal is different.
Is different?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, I can, I can show you.
And was, in your note, he, he was saying that he thought that the theory or the letter of what we were trying to accomplish, right, from the commission, didn't quite merit out in the factoring, is that what you meant, Chris?
Yeah, so this is the one I'm proposing here, and then this is the one after that meeting in August.
The one you're proposing has a red on it, right?
Yep, yep, correct. And then that was after, so it, it didn't change the...
Like this?
Did you say you didn't send the red one, I mean, or to the...
Did it come out at twenty-seven? And it didn't quite get the theory of what you're hoping, so then the new proposal is the thirty-five? Do you know what I'm saying? You know, we get after developer section, and the theory to even out what's, developers can find with thirty-five, with like a more even distribution between commercial lots, because I think when you redid it or something, it factored out to twenty-seven, right?
I believe, I believe that's correct.
And then?
I just want to make sure.
And then this was the new, new hope though, was thirty-five?
Right, that's, that I believe is what we're here for. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, Martin?
Um, I don't know. I, the only thing I wanted to add is I agree with, I agree with the load factor there, what we did. But I thought we were working with what you guys want, and I thought we kind of tried to accomplish that. And now, now we see a curve ball coming, I mean, it's not our call at this point, it's in your court, but...
Yeah, I, I feel the same way, actually. I mean, we spent a lot of time on it, we took the comments into consideration, I believe. I mean, I think you even said you were fine with that, that figure.
Had you not seen this, this, this new?
We, we, we talked about it, we did some rough calculations.
Mr. Mayor, we should just limit it to, to just Martin providing input. We didn't notice a special meeting for the Special Assessment Commission, and they technically have a quorum, so.
Okay, understood.
Um, I don't believe I had anything else, so.
Okay. Thank you, Martin.
Yep.
All right. You guys have any other questions on this? I, I agree guys, it's a curve ball, but I do see that, but the consistency factor, if you're going to do this, being a Westerner, kind of the older, we did this, what, twenty-eight, twenty is what it was?
Built in twenty-twenty, yeah.
Yeah, so, kind of look at the old rules, I know we're, we're talking current policy, but I do honestly see consistency as well, you know, be able to.
I don't know, I mean, with all due respect, I, you know, the whole consistency word, like, like the two council members alluded to, we have different times, different, it's never going to be consistent as far as, oh, hey neighbor, what was your specials? Oh yeah, mine were fourteen thousand dollars more. That's never, that's not a realistic thing. I, I don't know how I feel right now about this. I can listen to your guys' comments about it, but I will say, I, I do find it disheartening that we have a special assessment committee working so hard, spending hours upon hours and going over information at length with people and have done more work with this committee than they ever did in the years past. I find that a little bit disheartening.
I'm not going to discount the work they did, that's not the point, the point is though, sometimes we have to reassess things in the year now. So that's why I'm just saying that I understand where he's coming from, and if you guys object to that, that's fine, but I'm just saying I understand what we're trying to do here, it's, it's possible that if we go along with what we're dealing with right now, we may not be able to move that commercial property.
And then let's say they can't move the residential, I mean, we are hearing from all of these other cities how we need to have affordable housing, and so I, when you have two, it's like it, the narrative only fits when you, when you want it to.
Thirty-five thousand was pretty consistent with the other lots.
I'm just saying, if we start messing and figuring out, I'm all for fixing the policy, I would like to fix the policy and I want to have their input, I think it's important. I've actually been waiting for that meeting for quite some time now. I think that there's work to be done, I can't, I don't disagree, but I also am hearing, oh, we need to have affordable housing, oh, and then we start upping the specials and then let's say they can't move these lots, but we're, I just want to make sure that we are being mindful of the housing market.
Mr. Mayor, I had one quick, quick comment, I had so many thoughts and I was trying to boil it down, but Naomi kind of spurred this, this thought. You know, we can't always look in the back, in the rearview mirror. Like we had so many, so many of these districts came up and they said, well, this is how you did it last time. Well, either the policy wasn't in place, it's a different commission and whatnot, and at some point we need to start going towards policy and start being consistent. And that, that spurred that line of thought, but I thought I'd mentioned that too. I think where there was objections, it was like, well, in my previous development, we did this. And so we have to stay in line with that, it's like, well, we have a policy now, we have, we're trying to stay within that policy, so I just wanted to bring that up.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So which ones are you considering? Just so I can keep up.
I mean, are you saying go with stacks or go with max?
Which stacks one? The one that was done with.
With the special assessment committee?
The one that didn't get the results that they wanted.
Twenty-seven.
The twenty, the twenty-seven.
You said the results that they wanted, I want you to clarify, who's the.
I interpreted it as the committee and the developer, is what I, they all had in their head that this halfing of it was going to yield this result.
And it didn't quite.
Didn't.
It didn't make it to the numbers they wanted.
When we met.
Not knowing what it was going to come out to.
And it was, and.
Yeah.
It was this way of getting the formula, and we thought we had it, turns out it was less of the blue to be squished than it was the other stuff, so.
Yeah, so what we did, so the reason we did the fifty percent reduction, we thought, okay, we'll reduce this, then it will put the commercial lots right about where we discussed, it'll be right around that too, because we also know that, are a little bit under, because we know there'll be additional regional assessments on future developments going to these commercial lots, and then they figured, and what we discussed on that meeting in August, these would push up to around that thirty-four, thirty-three is what we were thinking, but obviously it didn't happen.
So that was the discussion in the whole, at the time?
That was between the special assessment commission, me and Jim, and that, that's why we said, let's do that, and we thought that's what we're going to yield on the results, and this is what we ended up getting. So it's, it's off from what I think we discussed on the twenty-second.
Martin, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So the official meeting minutes for that August fourteenth meeting said that the following discussion, Commissioner Omit motion seconded by Commissioner Mackowitz, that the assessment list for Water Source Storm and Street Improvement District twenty-two-one dash one shall be amended based upon the developer's recommendation producing load factor for commercial and mixed use properties, allocating costs accordingly and equalize residential loss in their respective blocks, and that assessment must be in the same as hereby confirmed. So that's, I don't know if that helps or makes it worse, but that was the discussion that was had at that meeting.
I think that made it clear, yeah.
Okay.
We didn't talk down the figures. So what we're seeing up here then is what they landed?
No, well, I guess if, yeah, if there wasn't a dollar figure in it, then by doing that action, by reducing the load factoring by fifty percent, this is what would land on this, so.
And Chris, you were, then you took this and came up with saying, okay, if we need to do more, and that's what you presented to us tonight. Exactly.
Yes.
And it's, like I said, we're willing to adjust it off of that, but it, it, yeah, it didn't quite land where, what was discussed on the twenty-second meeting.
So the thing that I noticed was just the fact that you've got, aside from Arrowwood, we'll leave that one out, is that we've got Lost Lakeview with a typical residential lot at thirty-five thousand, roughly, there's thirty-five, thirty-six, twenty-nines in there, Terror Gardens third edition, all constructed, they're all built in the same time period in that thirty-five, thirty-seven, so what sets Saltdale Farms apart to the twenty-seven two, where these other two constructed at all the same timeframe, they don't have commercial property at all. I take that back, Lakeview does.
That's what I'm saying.
Terror Gardens is straightforward, Terror Gardens is a straightforward local assessment only project.
Yeah, that one would be a relational to it, okay.
So I'm, I'm just.
Yeah.
So we also knew when we did the special assessment policy that there were going to be, that it wasn't perfect, I mean, there were going to be some corrections and changes with it, and this might be one of those presentations where we're going to have to, like I said, revisit this thing, because it's not, it may not be exactly what we're looking at doing, so.
Well, I would like to make sure that we revisit the policy as soon as possible.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is you can't make changes to it during the process that were created.
No, I'm just saying, for future.
For everybody's benefit.
I would like to get something figured out so that we don't have to.
Hope by this time next year, we'll, I mean, by the spring, we should have something figured out.
So, so this is project zero for the policy.
Right.
This is the first one that it was done on, and by golly, it didn't have commercial, school, public.
And Lakeview was number two.
They have, they had, it ran the game.
Yeah.
Local, regional, you name it.
Okay.
All right, what do you guys want to do?
I, I think after the discussion tonight, that I would be willing to consider accepting what Mr. Mack has brought forward tonight. I do, I do think it's still, it's falling in the letter of the discussion that you had with the special assessment commission. It's just didn't quite get to the numbers that it sounds like they were discussing in the meeting minutes that you just mentioned. And I also recognize that the policy, the timing of when the policy was approved, so, I mean, I'm, I'm still open for more discussion, but that's kind of where I'm waiting.
Jeff, what do you think?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Hope you guys are okay with, then we'll for somebody to make a motion. Naomi?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. But I just want to make it clear, I want to get the policy in working order so we can.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a fluid, it's a fluid document.
I understand it.
That was the purpose of it from the start, and that's why we also made sure that we kept discretion in there for the special assessment commission, for the city council to make changes that you guys.
And I'm not asking to take any of that away, I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm.
I would like to be able to come here and say, great.
And I, if you get it right on version two, it.
Again, it's a living document that is going to change every, almost every year because of situational circumstances.
Yes.
We knew that from the beginning here, this is nothing unusual, so. And Alan, Martin, this isn't discounting anything you guys did, you just understand where we're at with this one. You guys did a damn good job on doing the special assessments this year, I'm not going to discount any of that. You guys did a good job.
You really have, thank you.
Yeah, that would never be my, my thought. That would never be my intent, ever.
So, all right. So somebody wanted to make a motion on the South Hill Farms third edition, if you want to do that.
Make the motion. I would accept the changes proposed by the developer to spread the cost more evenly and fairly throughout the residential section of Selfdale third.
All right. Jeff make some motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second?
And just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, and that, that would be then to confirm the list then as revised, correct? Or do you want, do you want to have that as your motion, see the numbers, and then come back, and I don't need to complicate this, but then come back at a different meeting, or is it?
I would like to see the numbers one last time. I would like personally to revise that list, make sure that it is done, and I know, I apologize, Jim, but we're approving it, so eventually, I want to see that list before we actually approve it.
You do.
So I would like you to update it.
So what did you change on the one I sent you?
Nothing, I just added this for, but I guess.
Okay.
The price first.
So here you go, this is it.
Thirty-five thousand, fifty percent?
Yup. So if you, if you, if you want to see the list. It's also, I believe, the handle, one of the handles Chris gave you.
There's a spreadsheet.
Thirty-five thousand in this, that was there.
I was a simple break. Yeah, I think it's in his comments. Damn, wrong one.
Wrong one. I had a fifty-fifty shot, I got it wrong.
Chris, that was awesome, you can get off from the comments, right?
From your objection.
It was in your objection letter. Email.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you had a bunch of hidden files on, hidden sales.
G S X four.
Oh, is that what it is?
That's that according now, and that's the according to the G S. Something that gets shifted, you have it shifted as you sort the columns.
Right, so this is the list here then. And that's the revised one, right, John?
Yeah, that would be the one that.
That one that Chris was presenting.
Yeah, that's this, South Hill Farms third edition, thirty-five thousand residential, fifty percent regional over the others.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so you have a list?
Correct.
Everything adds up, numbers.
Yup.
Okay. We'll approve that list, and I'll make a mush to approve that list.
That was your intent from the original.
Correct. I just wanted to see.
Yup. That's fine. Stephanie, you still okay with the second?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
All right.
Okay, then we move on to Terror Gardens.
Let me blast all the South Hill Farms off of here so we can show like we're making some progress here. All right, so next project, we have Water Source Storm and Street Improvement District twenty-two-one dash two, this is Terror Gardens third edition, it's on the north side by Wall Avenue, eighty-eighth Avenue, and then on the south side, Park Drive, so consisted of a standard subdivision, there's thirty, maybe lots of them.
Right.
Sixty-one lots in this one, it was all broken out, local cost, like I said, street front foot, water, water front foot, sewer front foot, service connections by the each area by, or storm drain by the area. So there were, this was as presented by the, as a policy, because it's pretty straightforward. Special assessment commission proved it as that, no comments were made by any residents. Brings us to where we are today.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
I will second.
Okay. Just a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Our next one, Jeff, blast this one away. Next one we have is Water Source Storm and Street Improvement District twenty-two-one dash three, the Lakeview edition. Lakeview edition is a rather large district, includes Cub Creek first, second, first and second editions, the Lakeview edition, and part of the Roots edition. It was a construction that had a lot more local and regional components to it, there's a pond here, a pond here, the babbling water through here, these were constructed as part of the project. The reason that Cub Creek first and Cub Creek second are in this assessment district is due to regional stormwater components, so when Cub Creek was originally planted and constructed, there was a pond lot purchased for this pond, this pond, this pond, and this pond. In order for the Lakeview edition to discharge, their stormwater has to go through this pond and a drain twenty-seven, which acts as a whole through this three quarters of a section. So the assessment for Cub Creek first and second was based upon area, and it was due to regional storm sewer only, they did not get assessed for anything other than regional, regional storm sewer. This project was a mimic as far as its assessments, the way that it was assessed, due to the Cub Creek first edition assessing the Lakeview edition. So this one doesn't really follow the policy real well, because this was established prior to, prior to the policy as well. There were comments that were received by the residents of Cub Creek, they came in with asking questions about why they would be assessed for portions of the project that we weren't being assessed for. They just happened to read the preliminary agent report and asked the questions of why there is curbing gutter, why is there sliding, why there's all this stuff that they've already got. But they had been assessed for that through their local assessment of Cub Creek first edition. So you notice here that the parcels along eighty-second Avenue have a significantly reduced assessment, the reason for that is their services came off of eighty-second Avenue, so they're getting just a minor assessment for regional storm sewer. The remainder of these, off of eighty-third and St. Anne all had regional and local improvements, so they got their water, their sewer, their storm and their street. The pond lots are at a zero, the reason this one is not is the direction of the special assessment commission was that the pond lots would be zero. This is park, that parkland right now, so there is a plan for this to be, or a concept for this to be a pond, but it is not set in stone, it is purely a, it, it could happen, so that's why this one got assessed. This is the diocese zones, this parcel, there was load factoring, but it was a modified load factoring done on these. I believe that this is, mixed use was fourteen units per acre, and the special assessment commission at their meeting, once we reviewed it, it was, the residential was quite low comparison to the rest of the land around it, so these were dropped in half. Same with the rest of these, these parcels, you'll see, there's some area along Roots Edition that they received a minor, I believe we had a twenty-five percent storm sewer benefit because of the old railroad bed, it ran along, the water ran along the railroad bed. Now with the St. Anne improvements through here north of Casey's, there's storm water that can come out here, so they got a twenty-five percent assessment along the back of those. There was a couple of comments that came through with the special assessment commission, objection hearing about those, but a little education to a couple of them, and it was, it was pretty much known as what it was. So the developer did have comments about the residential lots, and it was the same as what we just talked about, is that the eighty, they wanted eighty-second and eighty-third to be comparable as far as what the assessments are, because eighty-second was a, was a project that was done prior, and that's, it was another one of those things. And that's... It was another one of those things where Eighty-Second would have been significantly higher than Eighty-Third. So they wanted to balance that out. That was taken into account with the Special Assessment Commission. It was directed by the Special Assessment Commission to get to where we're at today. You might notice this land around the park or the pond as being assessed. This is parkland. It's not pond. The city owns the pond. Park has the remainder around it. So this is park. This is park. This is park. And then we've got some other stuff out there. This was one where we started with the use factors, and then the Special Assessment Commission as a whole directed us to reduce those down to try and not... You know, this is... Church has a use factor of schools. Churches are twenty-five per acre, and it was a significantly high number. And I mean, this isn't a small number. Don't get me wrong. It's a million dollars, but it was more higher. It was more than that. So this has all been reviewed by the developer. We've gone through the objection, so... The property on North Side St. Benedict's. So we did get a comment from the owner of this lot back in... At the objection hearing, we did send out a notice to them earlier today.
Which lot?
Lot on North Side St. Benedict's, straight north of Casey's, to the other side of...
So we did receive... So this is Casey's right here. This is the St. Benedict Avenue extension. This lot, we did send out a... There were some questions on that, Three Forty-four Main Street. It's own mixed use. The assessed acreage was point five nine. The front footage was the assessed modified footage, which is the front footage times the rear footage divided by two, so fifty-six point... Two fifty-six point eight. Assessed for one sanitary connection, one water line connection. It's assessed for the local street, sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer connection, water main water connection, regional storm sewer, local storm sewer, to get us to that sixty-seven, six forty-nine, six ninety-four. And I do believe that the lower factor was reduced on that one from fourteen, I believe, to seven just because of the way that it was... And these were here as well.
Reduced from fourteen to seven.
I believe it was fourteen to seven, so...
Can I speak on behalf of that lot? I'm the owner of it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself then, too.
I'm Travis Styles. Live in eighty-three oh one Memory Lane. So I am lot five, block one, the one in yellow. And I was just wondering, the assessment value comes out to be two dollars and eighty-eight cents a square foot. And I'd been trying to get information on just how it came to that value, and I just got this email here this morning. So I tried to get here as quick as I can. But I'm just curious, on across the street, Casey's Liquor Store and Gas Station, being twice the size of my lot, is only seventy-five thousand dollars and some change assessed, and I'm sixty-seven thousand dollars and some change? And then the lot to the north of me is zero dollars. Just wondering how those values are fair.
So the lot to the north has water and sewer coming off of this. There's an easement through here. So they have water, sewer coming off of that. There's street access. So these are kind of properties that are on island right now. There is some sort of a utility or an access easement along here, but I don't think it goes all the way to this lot or it's back here. No, no, I can't remember a hundred percent. And this one pretty much sheds water this way. It pretty much all goes to the west. So your largest assessment is due to your frontage, you having two hundred and fifty-six point eight feet of frontage for the street portion. And the street portion makes up a pretty sizable amount of the assessment. So Casey's would have gotten this plus this, I believe, and they've got this plus this divided by two. So they maybe got... Yours went a little higher, and theirs probably went a little bit lower. And then they have their area at a certain percentage. Their water and their sewer...
I remember if they were in the assessment amount for the water sewer, I believe they were.
It should have been, yeah, because they connected... It took out their separate tank, connected to the sewer.
Yeah, they connected to our sewer.
And they connected. The water used to come across seventeen. Now it goes out to that road. So with... I hate to say, but it's the way the numbers work out, I guess, based on what we have.
Yeah, I feel that's not exactly fair, being they have... I have a half acre lot, so I'm kind of limited on commercial use and what I can do on that lot. With Casey's being one acre, the amount of vehicles and usage of that lot is significantly more than I will ever be able to do on mine, and to be that close to pay the same amount. I'm just struggling to see how that is based on the shape kind of screwed with the... Skewed with the formula a little bit on coming up with the numbers.
And Jim, did you say that the lot to the north of him, it's... This is regional, and they don't... They're not benefiting from drainage because their drainage is a different direction.
Goes differently.
If that's why. Okay, okay.
So, Jim, you guys discussed this with the Special Assessment.
Briefly. It wasn't a real lengthy discussion.
Okay. Is there any questions? Okay. Well, thanks for your attention. I answered something. Yeah, I understand what Jim's talking about. I don't know if anybody's got any comments on that. It is based upon the footage like that, and they... It's based upon our policy. So we can make adjustments on occasion, but I don't know. Put you guys' thoughts.
I mean, do you have a written objection?
No.
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 I can say I don't have.
Looking at it, but I mean...
Well, my business partner and I, we a month and a half ago, we started emailing, sending, and I just got our first email reply this morning. And I was at the special assessment and just stood up here and just said we had an objection and we'd like it to be reviewed. Nothing ever got back. Played some phone tag. I don't know what else to do. Just I appreciate you guys looking at it. Just that... I mean, you can just see with the naked eye how that is not fair. I'm more than willing to pay. Just looking for a fair assessment. And I don't understand how that would be fair towards usage.
Can you blow it up, please? I can't even see.
Well, what would you like to be blown up with?
What do you have for our number?
Oh, sixty-seven, six ninety. It's sixty-seven... Hold on, I gotta get...
But can you zoom in and see the difference between the lot to the north of me gets zero dollars, which can explain why, but then sharing the same road with Casey's and their usage versus the usage I can do on my half acre lot? And we're paying just about the same.
So what would you like to see reduced, I guess?
Well, I'm paying two...
Use a different size. I mean, we use the plated dimensions of the lot. So I guess, would you like to see the front footage be reduced? Or I mean, the area is the area. I mean, see the area reduced?
I understand.
Maybe the area is not carrying enough weight, I guess, compared to the front footage.
If you're talking price per square foot, I'm paying two dollars and eighty-eight cents a square foot for these assessments, and Casey's is paying a dollar and sixty-three cents a square foot. I just... There's nothing close about that. And their usage is significantly higher than all I'd be able to do on my size lot. And then just getting assessed that kind of value just really limits things for someone bringing business.
Martin, I do not mean to put you on the spot, but do you have any thoughts on this? And I don't mean to put you on the spot. If you don't, then I understand.
Well, just one comment is we just had Chris back in here wanting to adjust by square foot, and he brings up, he's at two eighty a square foot, Casey's at a dollar something a square foot. I want to play the other side of the fence. I mean, we adjust it for him.
But so, yes, but in this instance, if you're going to adjust for this, it's to similar type properties. For the adjustment that he did for the previous one, that affected a bunch of properties. It wasn't just one. So keep that in mind. If you're going to do it for one, it's going to change potentially some of the other ones, including Casey's and their other commercial, too. You can't just pick one lot because someone came here and said, "My assessment is too high. Change it." You know, it's going to have to be something that we can tie to all the other ones as well.
And we did all the dollar per square foot on all those types of lots and adjust that against that.
So we don't have anywhere the policy was by square foot. Granted, that seems to be the common... We're fellers and the land owners want to talk in a square foot. We just deal in dollars.
You're looking for it, Jim.
I was just curious what the area was to the one next to that one. Just I'm trying to get my... It's not real.
Look here. You need to go to now? That would help if I was in the right city.
You're getting closer.
I am, yeah. So I just want to look at this one. This one is... I don't know. I want to look at this lot. All right. That is... Two point seven five acres.
All right, I guess it does show on that the GAS roughly.
Two eight six.
Two eight six.
Albeit the GAS acres aren't divided acres, but they're pretty close.
Yeah. Divided by what was that? Two point seven five.
This is about two forty per square here. This next, this one.
Very fine, though.
This one here.
Did you do it now?
Yeah, I did ballpark it.
Love that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, because I had to turn my head the other side. We used to do it.
And it has two sides of street fronts.
It does have. It does have quite a bit of frontage. I'll give you that one. So then...
But this one, yeah.
I mean, the biggest argument there is Casey's and I, we have the same street front that was added in, and I'm paying two dollars and eighty-eight cents, and they're paying a dollar sixty-three based on because the other side of their lot is shorter.
Okay.
Again, I'm sorry. Could you just reiterate again for me? I mean, what was this? Was this looked at?
We talked about all these things. This is... We went with policy and adjusted.
Okay.
I don't really have any other comments.
Okay.
We should develop it, but in all these cases, really came forward, and if you're adjusting accordingly, let's see the comments.
Okay.
So this one is two ninety-six a square. Is this one here, so... I mean, we can definitely look at... That's a variable. We can look at it.
I was just curious why you're comparing it, though, to those two lots back there.
I was just picking ones.
Oh.
I just was picking...
A similar...
Since you were using Casey's, I was using the one next the other way.
But it was comparing a similar nature. I mean, if we were to go start looking at just front footage, I mean, if we start looking at residential lots, residential lots are way higher front footage.
But isn't Casey's lot to my lot the most comparable thing you could ever have there?
Well, I would actually could argue that Casey's lot could be comparable, but also the one Jim just pointed out off the Lakeview Drive right there would be very comparable because it's a blank lot right now that has all the same features, water, sewer, street, front footage, breaks it down in squares.
But it's significantly larger to have more room to do things on when I just have a half acre lot.
But we're talking, you know, their size, but price per square foot is actually higher.
And I think we need to not look at it just the dollar per square foot because that's not the methodology that was used. So Jim is trying to say is you got to pull a factor out that we can look at to adjust. If you think this is too high, we need to look at that one factor. But then my caution is if you look at that one factor, be ready for it to change a lot to that district.
We'll be here all night.
The Special Assessment Commission did look at it, did discuss it, but the concern is, change it. You're changing it for...
Everybody.
For everybody, or all of the similar commercial. And I get your concern, but we can't just look at it a dollar amount per square foot because that's not the methodology that was used.
Right. Makes sense.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate your concern. But do I have to move on here? Can I keep going a little bit more?
Thank you.
Okay. What do you guys want to know?
All right. So I don't want to pick on you or anything like that. We did not receive an objection letter for that piece of property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But can I comment to that?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just my business partner and I, emails started a month and a half ago on getting information on the breakdown and the lots around it, like what they were being charged. And it never got one email response until this morning, a month and a half later, along with numerous times tried reaching out on a phone call. I got it to them one time for a phone call.
Did you receive a letter from the city saying that you needed to file an objection letter by a certain date?
No, just received a letter for that first special assessment meeting, just letting us know what the date was.
That was that letter.
Same letter.
Same letter.
It just doesn't have an exact date because we didn't know what the exact date was at that time. So it says just to check on the city's... Well, I'd just say the meeting with the City Council will be...
But it explains the process of...
Yes.
Written objection. Yeah.
Any questions?
I didn't appreciate it.
You guys want to do with this one, then?
I... By a letter by law, we did not receive an objection letter, is what I have to look at. Okay? We do not have any other objections to this assessment on how everything else is laid out. That makes it, I'm willing to move forward with how things are currently set right now just because we did not get a letter saying that I object. It can be literally that simple, you know, a letter to the city saying, "Hey, I object to this assessment." And it gives you the right to come here or to go to that meeting and explain your stance. Tonight, that period for at least for us, and I'll speak for myself for that matter, is if we open that up, it then opens up to everybody else in that same assessment district to come back and say the same thing. And this process could go on and on and on. And at some point, we need to move from temporary bonding to permanent bonding and certify the special assessments. So from my standpoint, I'm going to at least say I'm going to move forward. I will let them... Go ahead, sir.
I'm just wondering why that wasn't responded to for a month and a half. That it got to the morning of the meeting that I found it gotten, or why?
So we talked over the phone. I had emailed with Jason Carpenter. It's not like it was radio silence, but the one email that I got from Jason Carpenter was, "Can you give me a shout to discuss the questions on the specials for this lot? Is there any way to get it to two dollars a square foot?" And I can't operate with, can we get it down? So I mean, there's got to be some constructive comments from the two.
There was an email that we had like a list of ten questions that, like very good information that we were requesting. None of... It was never replied to. The questions weren't answered. You know, I'm not here just to be a complainer. I just wanted a fair assessment, and we had a lot of good questions. And we never got a reply.
Who'd you send them to?
Brenna and I got them.
Okay.
Brenna and I were the ones.
And I know we've had, like Jim mentioned, he had conversations with Travis and I spoke with Jason earlier around the time of the Special Assessment Commission meeting, when they reviewed that, too, explaining the process here on these different things. It's... There were discussions with the property owner. You know, Jim went through. You have quite... My understanding... quite, my understanding, you had quite a while, quite a long conversation, it wasn't just a two minute conversation, it was a significant conversation to go over this stuff.
Yeah, so, I'll still, okay, hang on, I'm gonna come back to this, pretty much what Jeff said, there wasn't an objection letter, that's where we stand on this tonight. I appreciate your conversation with this, but again, there was an objection letter, so we're not gonna proceed further with those, including my commentary on this. I understand your position, but I don't have a letter sitting in front of me tonight, so.
And I think, you're, you're really quick, I was just gonna mention that, this does fall right in the middle, we have to show, it falls in the middle of where assessments of similar nature, product or property of similar nature, it falls in the middle.
Okay.
So, it does.
All right, do you guys have any other questions or concerns for Jim or Lucas?
No, Travis, I thank you for wanting to come and speak to us and, you know, um, discuss your concerns, um, so thank you for doing that. You know, the letters that go out, they do list the steps that you need to take, and so I apologize if maybe there was some confusion on that, but I do know that we've, we have sent out communication to properly make sure that residents know the process, and I know that you've had maybe some back and forth with some staff members, but even so, you still have to, there has to be a process to go by, so you should have still sent the letter to, sent the letter in.
So the letter, just a simple letter, I would have a.
Yeah, I, I just clarify, I don't even think that's it, I mean, we're, I wouldn't just rely on that.
No.
Yes, the letter wasn't sent to, you're supposed to provide a, a written appeal stating your objections to the special assessment commission's determination, that wasn't done, that's supposed to provide an outline to the city to say, okay, you know, what is the reason for the appeal? Here you're just saying that you don't like the number, so it doesn't provide any clarification to the city on, on how to change it, but even so, council is sitting here and can't look at this and say, well, what if we do this? What if we look at X variable or Y variable to change it? That, that, I just don't see it happening here, and so really, the special assess, or the city council is relying on methodology that was used by the special assessment commission, which is to look at the front footage, which is to look at the square footage for certain components, which is to look at the things that Jim explained previously, that's what you're relying on. And yes, procedurally, you, you didn't follow what's outlined and what was provided in, in the letter, in the policy, in the century code, on the website, in the notice to the paper, whatever else. And so, I mean, the totality of it is, that's what the number is, and the city council is playing with the special assessment commission based on the methodology that they used.
But you never shared that information with me for a month and a half until this morning, when I'm at work, right before this meeting.
It was all discussed at the special assessment commission meeting, and you were at that special assessment commission meeting, correct?
Yeah, not the price breakdown on how my lot was at, at all, that wasn't discussed, didn't even have the board working up front, and I just requested it to be reviewed, and, um, from what I got from Jim, and I had a call reach back out that I don't think my specific lot was exactly reviewed, and I didn't get any information on the price breakdown, um, or any of the questions answered. I know I don't have the letter, um, sorry about that, but, I mean, you guys can look up there and know that, that's not fair, and I thought this was just about fairly assessing everybody's values. But I know I deserve to pay just like everyone else, um, it's just crazy that Casey's has paid seventy-five thousand, and I'm paying sixty-seven.
All right, so.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
We gotta move on. I must suggest we move forward with those currently sitting in front of us. No changes.
Letter by law, we, we have to, and that, I, our hands are kinda tied right now as to what we do. If, if we open this up, I, I know you, you, you were looking at it from your standpoint, from me, I have to look at it from a city standpoint. If I open this thing up, I don't know what can learn, so I'm going to open up by doing that. And I understand, I do.
Yeah.
Gonna be really look at it or not, later on? Not.
I want to certify it, certify it.
We're certifying.
I want to certify it, certify it. That's the problem. So, eh, this is where I wish, you know, that, that letter would've came out a long time ago, or at least, you know, if, if you had objections, you know, to, did you talk to the, you know, anybody in the special assessment commission?
Yeah, try to bring Jim to get it resolved.
For those, for either the, any of the people that are on a special assessment.
I objected that name.
Commission, okay?
And there was no, no direction from the special assessment commission to change that, that lot?
Right.
And I, I guess that wasn't known.
Okay, I, then, then what I'm saying is, I am, I am trying to, not just forward ahead, but I am, my hands are tied, I don't have that letter saying that you object for me to, for me to make a change.
Take it any further.
And, and it wouldn't just be a change for you, like they're saying, it would be a change across everything tonight, and that's opening a huge can of worms.
So staying with policy, basically is all there is here.
So, in that regard, I have to move forward tonight, and I apologize. With that, I'm gonna make a motion to accept your recommendations, uh, given by special assessment commission for, um.
What?
Lakeview Edition twenty-twenty-one dash three.
Okay, somebody wanna do the second?
I will.
Okay, you wanna do the second? Great, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Passes. Earl with third, Jim.
All right, Earl with third, with the water sewer storm and street improvement district, twenty-twenty-one dash five, uh, this is the area south, north of Liberty, Liberty, west of County Road seventeen. Um, as you can see on the map here, we had, I think there's thirty-eight, thirty-eight lots, this is all local assessments, um, it was broken out, uh, kind of by, this one was normalized, wasn't it? Wasn't this supposed to be equalized by all lots?
Uh, I'm trying to remember, cause we took his recommendation based on.
Because the developer provided a recommendation similar to that of Casey's to do more equalized the lots, so.
Yeah.
You might have, but, Lucas?
Yes, so, the, the official meeting minutes for this council, um, motion to second that the assessment list for water sewer storm and street improvement district number twenty-twenty-one dash five shall be amended based upon the developer's recommendation for reallocation, and that said assessment list, uh, being the same, it's hereby confirmed, I don't know if that helps you.
So he provided us with a document at that time, I wanna say, it was all of them together.
Yes, so the developer provided a document, um, where he wanted certain lots at ninety-thousand three forty-two, ninety-five thousand three forty-two, seventy-five thousand three forty-two, ninety thousand three forty-two.
So that's this, he did have it worked out, it says ninety thousand three forty-two, seventy-five three forty-two, and ninety-five three forty-two. So this was his wishes.
That was ba, I mean, was that just based on, he wanted a reallocation of what would go on the lots?
Just the way that it was distributed.
Because some, some of the lots, um, when they were originally done, were like a hundred and eight thousand, a hundred and two, a hundred and twelve, a hundred and four, he didn't want any of the lots to be six digits.
Okay, and did he work, he worked with the special assessment commission, and this is what you guys are proposing? I mean, what was on front of us?
I mean, if you're asking me, when he came forward, it was nothing based on policy, it was just, I wanna reallocate the numbers so that they all have similar assessments. And because none of the lots were sold to homeowners, we, you know, said, okay, I guess, I guess that's all.
Yes, some, some I notes from that meeting to say essentially prevent lots from having specials over a hundred thousand dollars, so that was the developer's goal here.
Okay. What's the average size of those lots?
They're quite, they're, they're quite a bit bigger.
They look like they're fairly large, I was just curious what we're looking at here.
And then.
Point one, seven acres.
You all.
The middle ones are about point, uh, point two-two, so twice the size of the little standard one.
Okay.
And then I think you guys are all provided the developer's written appeal, I, it says, it says that he's gonna be here, or I don't know if he's gonna be.
His wife was here for the first about half hour of the meeting, and then not.
Oh.
So.
I believe.
So no one is here too.
Oh, I thought that was her.
He's here, no one is here.
No one's here.
Discuss the letter that was sent.
But he's okay with this?
It was their recommendation.
He's okay with what, he's okay with what the special assessment commission came up with?
With the numbers, I don't, he wants, I don't know what he wants, he's not here.
Their concerns, the developer and his wife, they're, they're very concerned still with overall project cost, uh, the developer recommend, or, or the special assessing commission consider, uh, the specials be kind of normalized out, a little, averaged out a little bit more, and I believe they took their recommendation, uh, for consideration, in consideration, they did that. Uh, the developer's really, uh, concerned about costs, they kept on bringing up cost, 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 and they're trying to dictate bonding measures and what we do at bonding level, nothing to do with how specials are allocated.
Okay.
On that, so they imply that the specials are high, but this is probably what you're gonna see next year, when we're going through this process next year, projects are more expensive, and this project was, right on the front, is the first one of higher costs.
Well, I also want to counsel, this project has been going on for nine years.
Years.
Nine. It was before I even started on the file.
Yeah.
Nine years.
Yeah. I don't got to discuss like my first year, we were talking about this a little bit.
Okay, so Joel is fine, as long as all of these lots are under the six-figure range.
That's what was presented to the special assessment commission, this doesn't want them in six figures.
Well, it looks good.
And these are the same numbers.
Yeah, I mean, we're approving what the special assessment commission is recommending.
And that was based off of what the developer recommended to the special assessment commission.
Okay, okay.
And there's no objections tonight, so.
Correct.
I don't know, I guess there's somebody wanna make a motion to.
Yeah, I will do that, please, thank you. I'll second.
Second, second, all right? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Correct, I'm looking for a motion to observe the meeting.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Perfect.
Thank you.